And I see we have a full complement of the commissioners and alternate commissioners this evening. I just want to announce that we post the agenda for this meeting at several sites throughout town, at the city hall, at the public library, at the San Marino Recreation Department, and on the city website. The general order for the meeting tonight, each commissioner has received plans and staff comments, and has reviewed every item on the agenda and has visited each site. The general order for each, for hearing each case will be as follows. Staff will discuss the case and provide background information and a recommendation. I will ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to comment on their proposal. And the hearing will then be open to the public. I will ask for comments for, against, or about the project. In all cases, please come forward, give your name and address, and then make your comments. When you're speaking on an item, do not repeat comments previously made by other speakers, but rather just acknowledge your agreement with the previous speaker. But if you do have anything additional to say, please add that. At the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and then I will ask for comments from each of the commissioners, and we'll discuss each item amongst ourselves. Most of the cases involve variances, conditional use permits, and/or design review. The commission will discuss and act on each one individually. In each case, variances will be considered first, then conditional use permits, and then finally, design review. If there is no motion for approval or denial, the planning commission has the option of continuing the application to a future meeting. In the event of a continuance or a denial, it is hoped that the applicant will have heard comments during the public comment period and during commission deliberations that will be useful in resubmitting the application. It is important for the property owner to understand that once a project is approved by the commission, the drawings become legal documents. If any changes are made to the project subsequent to approval without obtaining proper approval of those changes, then the property owner is in fact breaking the law. There is a risk of having to change the project back to the originally approved design or paying a fine to the City of San Marino equal to the greater of 5% of the project valuation, or $2,500, and then resubmitting the changes of the project to the commission for approval. It is also important to understand that there is a 15-day appeal period after action has been taken for the applicant or any interested party to request the city council to review and act on the case. The commission will usually take items in the order shown on the agenda. Occasionally, it will take them out of order if there are a large number of people here on one item. That item might be taken ahead of others as a courtesy to those present. I don't believe that is the case this evening. And the commission will not start a new item after 11:00 PM. Items not heard will be carried over to an adjourned meeting or to the next regular meeting. So with that, could we have roll call, please?
Alternate committee member, committee member Okazaki.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Yes, here on Zoom.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Brody?
Present.
Thank you. Vice Chair Boyle?
Here.
Chair Dustin?
Here.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to ask staff to take us with our first agenda item, reorganization of the planning commission.
Thank you, Chair. Before I go to item number one, I do want to introduce Stephen McEwen. He's our city attorney who will be with us for a couple of meetings to help guide staff as well as the planning commission. So certainly, if you feel you have a question, you can address it to staff or you can sort of address it to Stephen. We're certainly here to help and provide a resource. So welcome, Stephen.
Thank you.
So the first item on the agenda is reorganization of the planning commission. And so for starters, I'd like to open up for nominations for chair.
I'd like to nominate Vice Chair Boyle for chair.
I'll second that nomination. And I'd like to thank Chair Dustin for a wonderful year of heading up this commission.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Is first, seconded, we'll get a roll call?
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is for vice chair, and so I'd like to open up the nominations for vice chair.
I would like to nominate Howard Brody for vice chair.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carry. Thank you.
I was very happily accurate at my seat.
Oh, do I move?
Yep.
Yes.
My goodness.
You could have just moved the name tags.
You gotta be in the center of the.
They're kind of close, but okay.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Here we go. Moving on to agenda item number two, can we have the staff report?
Agenda item number two is conditional use permit 21-01. It's a request to operate an antique store at 2347 Huntington Drive. This request has been withdrawn. The applicant has expressed desire to operate a retail establishment in conformance with city codes. The recommendation is to receive and file the withdrawal letter.
Okay, is there, do we still have public comment, or do we just, okay? And so I open it up to the public for any comment?
No comments on Zoom.
All right, and so then I guess we can have commissioner discussion? I don't think there needs to be, but.
Maybe a motion?
Yeah, you can either have a discussion or go right to requesting a motion.
Okay.
I just have a quick comment if I could, Chair.
Yes.
I just feel bad that the way that meeting went, and I just hope that we maybe can set up some procedures to deal in the future with issues of translation and so forth. I think the applicant really kind of didn't realize what he was getting himself into, and I just felt very badly. And I'm glad to hear that he's still pursuing his business. I would have been very disappointed to hear if he had just walked away from it, so. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. So I guess next, is there a motion?
I'll move to receive and file applicant's withdrawn letter for conditional use permit number CUP 21-01.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Can we have the roll call?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And before we move on, Jerry, Commissioner Wright, we are having a very hard time hearing you.
Oh, okay. I don't know if I can help with that. I'm up to the very high volume.
Okay.
I'll talk louder.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number three, can we have the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Agenda item number three is design review case, case number DRC 20-40 HP for the property located at 2230 El Molino Place. This is an application requesting for permission to construct a new two-story colonial revival residence with a detached two-car garage. The property is not listed on the city's City Y Historic Preservation Survey, and the construction of this project will not remove any mature trees on the property. Additionally, staff would like to point out that this is one of the few applications that receive 100% support from the neighbor, from the neighbor approval process. Staff is able to make the required design review finding for these two-story homes, that it is compatible with the neighborhood in design, visual massing, and scale. Additionally, the proposed material is, is common for the proposed colonial style and have been seen in the city. Although there is, the proposed roofing material is not on the city's pre-approved material list, staff is providing a condition to mandate that the roofing material be the boral cedar line material that we have frequently used for new home projects in the city. And that concludes the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant or applicant's representative here?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We, I need to open it for, do the commissioners have any questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions, if you can hear me.
Yes. Commissioner Wright?
And maybe this is for the applicant representative, but I just want to clarify a couple of things. The demolition just talks about the house and garage, but is the pool going to remain? Because it looks like by the landscape plan, there's no pool. Is that right?
Correct. The swimming pool will be removed.
Okay, so the pool's going to be removed. And then what about when it talks about that demolition of the garage? Does that include that quote-unquote cabana?
The entire structure, including the cabana, will be demolished.
Okay, thank you. I thought yes to both, but I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I have, oh, go ahead.
Vice Chair Brody?
No question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you did.
I have one question, Chair. It's noted in the staff report that in consultation with the applicant, staff provided comments on exterior details and completeness of the application. Was the applicant responsive to that exchange?
Yes. Staff provided minor architectural detailing information, including reduction of the door height from eight feet to 7'6", and also additional dock ear at the bottom of the wood shatters that we typically see in colonial-style homes. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, can I, I will now open it up to the applicant or the applicant's representative.
Hello, my name is Feng Xiao. I'm the applicant and the principal of architectural firm FXA, located 2540 Huntington Drive, Suite Number 207 San Marino. I don't have much to add it. I mean, there, I mean, you've already have pretty thorough report, and the current owner actually bought this property from previous owner. There was existing approved design, so, so this currently, the new design is, we have reduced the score, even reduced score footage from previously approved design, and we're just trying to create some authentic architecture here to fit in the neighborhood. We have pretty good feedback from the neighbor, and also we work very closely with planning staff and try to get the right architectural detail, you know, go through the entire project. And one thing I did realize, and I don't know if any committee, commission is going to ask me this question, is the porch, the, the column, everything going to be wood. I just want to mention that there. So it wasn't, I think I did not label it an elevation. I just realized this before the meeting, but will be wood. So, so I think, I think that's it. I don't have much more to add it from Eva's report. You know, I'm here to answer any question you might have.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I have one.
Commissioners, Dustin?
Thank you. The model of exterior lantern that you're proposing for the front entryway, I looked it up, and the same manufacturer and model number applies to two different lights. One is an incandescent version and one is an LED version. And the information supplied on the plans does not specify which. Can you tell me, have you made a choice as to whether you're going with the incandescent or the LED?
I mean, from energy-efficient point of view, under the new code, I would say probably LED will be the better for energy saving.
You would not object if that were a condition?
Can you say it again? Well, we're open.
We wouldn't have a problem if we, if I asked for you to use the LED version.
Correct. I'm good with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant commissioners? All right, I would like to now open this up to the public and ask for any comments for, against, or about this project. Are there any online? All right.
None online, Chair.
Okay. Then we will conclude the public comments and move to commissioner discussion. Commissioners, before we start, I wanted to make a little bit of an alteration in how we do this part. I was hoping that we could, I will call on each commissioner and allow you to speak uninterrupted, and then we can convene as a group after everyone gets their time to speak, to then ask questions or, you know, comment to one another. Would that be acceptable to everyone?
Yeah, that's a good one.
Okay, thank you. So I will start with Commissioner Wright.
Okay, one of the things I really enjoyed about being a commissioner is being able to go down memory lane. And this house happens to be across the street from a house where I practically lived in during my high school years. So it brought back a lot of great memories to walk the street. So thank you for this application. So I got to, so I got to do that. I love that little street, and again, a lot of good memories. And I actually met one of the neighbors, Honey, a lovely woman, who said she did approve of it, although she thought it was a little plain. So I do pass that on to the commissioners. She thought it was a little plain. For me, I guess I have just a couple of concerns, and I kind of look to Commissioner Dustin for this about plate height. That made me a little nervous still about the first floor, but, but I don't know. When I went to look at it, the height looked fine. I was a little bit surprised, frankly. I thought I wouldn't, that I would think it would be too tall. But when I looked at the flags, which are very helpful, I was actually pleasantly surprised that it seemed like it would go with the, with the, with that area. Happy to see the trees are remaining, although I don't know if number 12 should remain. I think they said it was dead. Those beautiful trees and the landscaping. Again, I was looking a lot at the landscaping as far as how much is impervious, how much is not. You know? It looked like the front had quite a bit, the back. So I think with, with some tweaks, I could support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, I was able to make the requisite findings. I think it's a fairly modest design, and I think it's, it'll fit in the neighborhood. So I'd be able to support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Dustin?
Yeah, so you already know how I feel about the light. It's, the lighting that was chosen is very adequate. It's just that front entryway light. The incandescent version of it is quite luminous, and the LED version, I think, would be a much better fit, so I would like to see that as a condition. I like, Commissioner Wright had some concerns about the plate heights. I, on the one hand, I applaud the applicant for being restrained. I think we see people coming in here with just ridiculous requests on plate heights. This one, I thought, was still a little bit pushing it, and I appreciate staff knocking the door down to 7'6". I still think 7'6" is probably a little high for what you see in that neighborhood, but I'm not going to hang my hat on that. But I do have some comments about some design elements, so the colonial revival design, you know, you have to think of the Thrifty Yankee. They don't spend money on things that aren't necessary. There's a reason for everything that is on a colonial revival home. Leaderheads on single-story downspouts are an unnecessary affectation. That's not why they were developed. They were developed to allow proper drainage from second story and above gutters. So there's some leaderheads on this house that are on the second story, and that's very appropriate. But there are some that are on the first floor, and that isn't, it looks out of place. You would never see that on a palace of a thrifty Yankee. Also, just as a side note, it's really poor construction practice to locate second-story downspouts where they drain onto the first-floor roof. And in this situation, in this house, you could easily move the downspouts 6, 10 feet one way or another and clear the first-story roof and get down to the ground. You just are asking for long-term rot and drainage problems if you drain your second story onto your first-story roof. So I'd like to see the downspouts moved from the second, the second-story downspouts moved so that they drain straight to the ground, and then the first-story leaderheads eliminated. The chimney cap that is proposed is, again, excessively elaborate for the architectural style of the project. It doesn't fit with the relatively straightforward traditional detailing that's found on the rest of the house. It's just overdone. And then lastly, I'm a little concerned with the amount of impervious service, surface area in the rear due to that car turnaround feature. But after looking at the landscape plan, I was kind of, my concerns were, I think, assuaged because they're proposing so many trees. I just, my concern is they're olive trees, or no, I'm sorry, they're arbutus and tababoya is what they're proposing to put back there. And I've seen too many places where we've approved trees that are in big boxes, and they could eventually be beautiful, big specimens. But they just get pruned to hold them at the height they are when they went into the ground, and they never get to reach their full mature height, which is what you would need to sort of give appropriate shading and ground cover and drainage with that impervious coverage. And I was just curious if staff had any ideas. Is there a way that we can allow for a tree to be planted and to grow to its full potential, height and canopy span? Or is that really just not feasible?
It will largely depends on the species that's planted. If the chair is looking to provide a condition tonight, we will have to take into consideration the canopy at its, at full grown in order to plant a tree at a certain distance away from the foundation of the home to ensure that it will not cause structural damage in the future. But we can certainly provide.
I mean, I'm happy with the species and the sizes that they're picking. I just, I just get nervous. I see people planting olive trees, and they just stay the size of a bush for 20 years. I mean.
Perhaps we can consider a condition that mandate the, the consulting apparatus of the project to come back with an evaluation of the proposed planting material near the foundation of the home to make sure that there, there is adequate space for the trees to grow to its full potential.
I thank you.
Thank you. Alternate Commissioner Okazaki.
I'm perfectly happy with the design. I support this staff report. Thank you.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yeah, there are two things, and one was mentioned in the report itself that is of concern, and that's the roofing material. I'd imagine that, that the applicant would be satisfied with Cedar Light Silverwood, which is an approved product versus what's been proposed in the application. I also noted the downspout issue on the first floor, and I don't know if that's a design flaw or just a potential problem that's going to crop up in another five or six years, but that should be resolved. I am kind of mixed on the, on the height situation, but I don't think it's a concern which would cause me to deny the project. That's kind of where I am on it right now.
Okay, thank you. I agree with the staff report. I am largely what other commissioners have said tonight. I do very much appreciate the modesty of this house. Given the lot size, I was concerned with the plate height and the door height. But yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just weighing everything. Like, the landscape plan, I really liked the modesty of the house. I really liked. I think that with the conditions of the roof, the conditions of the lighting, and if you wanted to add a condition about something with the tree canopy, then, you know, but, but otherwise, I support this.
I don't really, I mean, I thought about this long and hard, and I couldn't really come up with a way, and I don't think staff really has a good way either, that from the discussion we had. So I'm, I'm willing to let that go. The only condition I'd like to see, in addition to the one on the roofing materials that the staff put, was that the, the entryway light be the incandescent version of that model. And, oh, well, if Howard will support me on the downspouts, I'd like to see those revised as well.
Sorry, Commissioner Wright, we didn't hear you.
Sorry. What about the chimney cap?
Oh, yes, yeah. So I'd rather have the chimney cap than the downspout, so.
Any other comments before we, okay? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve DRC 20-40 HP with the conditions noted in the staff report, and in addition, that the applicant stipulate that they will use the LED version of the lantern in the front entryway, and also that they would work with staff to select a more modest, less elaborate chimney cap.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Can we modify that to make sure that the roofing materials, cedar light?
Well, that's in the staff report. That's the condition noted in this.
It isn't in the body.
Oh, it is. Okay, yes.
It's in the narrative.
Thank you. Then I'll modify my motion to include that the roofing material be changed from the Madeira to the boral cedar light, silver light. Cedar light in the, what's the color?
Silverwood.
Silverwood. Thank you.
I'll second that modification.
And Chair, prior to the, to the, the vote, if we can just have the applicant state that they agree to the conditions, then we can go about the vote.
Okay. Applicant, do you agree to those conditions?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Can we do a roll call for the vote?
Yes, thank you. Chair Wright, Commissioner, Chair Wright, Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Chair Boyle?
Yes. Excuse me. Okay, moving on to agenda item number four, design review case number DRC 20-71 HP and 2072. Can we have the staff report, please?
Sure. DRC 20-71 HP and DRC 20-72, a request to construct a new approximately 5,144 square foot, two-story, single-family residence with an approximately 685 square foot detached three-car garage on a 27,587 square foot lot at 2775 Gainesboro. Of the five trees on the property, the applicant is proposing to remove three trees and relocate the remaining two. The property has not been identified on the city historic resources survey. The attached historic resource assessment report provided findings, or excuse me, provided finds that the property does not possess sufficient historical or architectural significance to merit listing in the National Register, California Register, or for designation as a local landmark, and therefore not considered to be a historic resource under CEQA. Staff is unable to make the findings required to approve the request, finding the scale, massing, and overall size of the home to be incompatible with the neighborhood, and materials and proposed details to be inconsistent with the minimal traditional style home. Staff recommends the commission continue the request to give the applicant an opportunity to address these concerns. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Dustin?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. First was, I'm trying to understand why 2751 Cumberland appears to be excluded from the legal neighborhood.
Let me take a look at the map. Can you repeat that address one more time for me, please?
Sure. It's 2751 Cumberland. Sure, it's, um, twenty-seven fifty-one Cumberland.
So the way the legal neighborhood is, is drawn according to the city's design review guidelines. Is that, uh, two projects on opposite sides, on either side, uh, of the subject property are selected from there. Uh, parallel lines that are drawn across the street to those properties. And the properties within those boundaries on the opposite side of the street are selected. So twenty-seven fifty-one would be outside of those, uh, parallel lines.
Okay, so, I'm, it's a good thing we have you attending here tonight. I, I read that a little differently, um. It says in the code. Extending the lots' property line across the street. And I'm assuming that means the property, wh- when they say the lots, they mean the subject lot. When you extend the lots' property line across the street, all properties across the street. Within the parameters of the extension and the property on either side of those properties. So I just, you know, took a quick Google shot and I stretched the property lines from the subject lot across the street. And on one side, though, they both end up on twenty-seven seventy Gainsborough. So that's the identified lot. And then on one side of that is twenty-seven ninety Gainsborough, and on the other side of that is twenty-seven fifty-one Cumberland. Well, I just, to me, it, it was, it seemed pretty clear that that. Other house should be included in the legal neighborhood.
Uh, just, just one second.
Sure.
Okay, uh, that was, that was done in error. Uh, the legal neighborhood was for the purpose of. Uh, determining the compatibility. Uh, the notice, however, was still done using the three hundred foot radius. That's required for planning commission hearings. So, uh, unfortunately, that one was missed, uh, in terms of, again, uh, neighborhood compatibility findings.
Okay, but we're not, I'm not really concerned about whether there was a notice problem. I just realized that now that that could have been, but, um, it sounds like that's not an issue. Uh, you just didn't take it into consideration when you were looking at compatibility.
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, hold on, I have another question. Uh, oh, yes. According to the agenda report, um, it says that on, oh, November second. Planning staff advised the applicant to reduce the building height, plate height, front yard impervious coverage and massing. Uh, simplify the roof forms and remove design details incompatible with a minimal traditional style home. Uh, my question is, were any of those advised actions undertaken by the applicant?
Uh, they were not. The applicant chose to, uh, continue with, with, uh, those outstanding, uh, comments.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, uh, I would like to invite the applicant or applicant's representative to comment on this proposal.
Good evening, Chairwoman Boyle and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Adele Chang. I'm with L C R A. The Architects for the Project. And, um, I would like to start by saying the owners have lived at this address for many years. And they raised their children there. However, the existing house no longer meets their needs. They would like to stay in the community and the proposed design reflects the way they live now. This is not a stuck home. A remodel was considered, but the existing house was badly added to probably in the seventies and eighties. Resulting in a chaotic floor plan. This house foundation has cracks. Which extend to some interior walls and the rear patio area has a sinkhole. The house is also poorly insulated and very hot in our long summers. The plumbing and HVAC systems have also deteriorated significantly. Any remodel would be almost a complete rebuild, so the owners decided on new construction. This lot is the largest one on Gainsborough. The size of the house is in proportion to the property and within what is allowed by code. The proposed new home aims to be an understated addition to the neighborhood. And uses high-quality, low-maintenance finishes, so it will be easier. Uh, so it will be more trouble free for the owners to retire in. The front elevation is very simple, with just a simple porch at the entry to provide a little weather protection. And shutters and a stone base to add texture. The colors fit into the colors of the neighborhood. And the porch is a sim- is in a similar look that can be found throughout San Marino. The side elevations are held very far from the side property lines on the second floor. In order to be least impactful to the adjacent neighbors. Having a narrow second floor in the rear also allows the front mass to be a simple roof. And for the rear portion to attach to it without exceeding the front ridge line. Historically, traditional homes began as a simple box. And then grew wings over time in a similar way as the family needs and resources increase. The design follows that pattern. I strongly disagree with staff's comment about a complex roof. The rear has a covered porch on the ground floor and covered deck on the second floor. In order to provide shade from the hot afternoon sun, which the existing house suffers from. A trellis is also proposed on the ground floor for the same purpose. The existing house has a second floor with a very low plate resulting from a clipped roof. With dormers both front, back and side. This makes the story post a- appear extra tall. Story post cannot show the overhangs and articulation, which also make the volume shown by the post appear bigger. Lastly, the owner and I visited the neighbors as required and showed them the proposed house. Every single one supported the project. Of course, we didn't know that. House on Cumberland was also within the required, uh, neighbors to visit. So we are here to listen to commission comments. And are open to constructive suggestions so that we could modify the design accordingly. And, um, the owner is also here and would like to speak. Our landscape architect is also present and available to answer questions regarding landscape, hardscape. And trees and such, so, um, and I'm also available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, I'm, I'm Jennifer Young. I'm, uh, Carrie Young's daughter and Laura D. Shea's daughter. And my, my dad is here to, uh. Say his piece and I want to translate for him.
Okay.
Um, okay, his name is Carrie Young. He's seventy-four years old. My mom is seventy years old.
Yeah, now he's retired.
Now he's, uh, he's retired. Actually, he kind of explained to me what he wanted to say in the car earlier, so let me just go from there. Um, so he's seventy-four, my mom is seventy. Um, they're, they both just recently retired. Uh, my dad has dealt with cancer recently. My mom has had knee surgery recently. So their health is deteriorating. Um, they want to rebuild this house, knowing this is probably. The last house that they'll live in, sad to say, um, and then, let's see. He wanted to say that before, uh, planning this design. He simply just, you know, I think this is a form that the city gives. Uh, it says the residential plan permission sheet. And you just plug in numbers and it says how big you can build a house. So he simply just built, plugged in those numbers and it came out to be fifty-one hundred. Um, but I know there are issues with that size for that street. Um, but he is saying that he just simply pl- plugged in the number, but he's willing to. Uh, like accommodate and revise the plan so that it becomes more modest for that street. The house that is currently there right now has a master room upstairs and a master room downstairs. Um, so the new plan also has a master room upstairs, master room downstairs. Uh, he wanted to say that my mom and him have very different schedules. She likes to, she's a night owl. She likes to. Watch YouTube late into the night, uh, and he goes to sleep at, you know, nine, ten PM. So, um, they need to sleep in separate rooms because otherwise they both would not cohabitate, you split together or, um. Or get the rest, obviously. Okay, um, he, my, my sister, his daughter, uh, he has a daughter in Spokane, Washington. She just recently gave birth to, um, a grand, a new grandson. Um, so she will be coming to visit often. It makes more sense for them to come and visit than for my parents to go over there and visit them. So, um, with that being said, they need the room so that grandkids can come to visit. Um, so. So, uh, I guess in conclusion, he wants to build his dream house. Um, you know, this is. Again, has probably the last house he'll ever live in. Uh, he loves the city. He, you know, is. Appreciative that the city tries to, how do you say, control the design. So that it doesn't get out of hand like some of the neighboring cities. Um, so he does appreciate that and he's willing to. Um, make revisions to the plan so that it becomes more modest and that, uh, you know, he's, they're willing, my parents are willing for the effort. To, uh. Basically follow the rules of the city, so.
Okay.
I think that's, that's all he wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative? No. Commissioner Dustin?
The finished schedule notes on sheet A two. And A two point one indicate that the proposed stonework on the chimney is brick veneer. Uh, but that is contra indicated by what is depicted visually on the elevations and renderings. Can you clarify what material you intend to use on the chimney, including the name of the manufacturer and the model name of the product, if you have that?
I noticed that earlier today, um, that, um, there was a discrepancy. It is meant to be stone. It is, uh, not meant to be the brick. The brick was left over from, uh, earlier.
So the, the, what's depicted visually on the renderings is, in fact, okay, so it's the.
It is the stone that is specified and should be on the color.
Right, right, the K O Natural Stone Signature Collection Bellevue Estates. Okay, thank you.
May, may I add something? I have noticed that Commissioner Dustin does pay a lot of attention to. To lighting and our intention is for wherever we have, oh, you know, required by code to have a light. By doors, um, we intend to have recessed downlights so that they do, do not become a hotspot. On the elevations except for the front. At the front door, maybe just a ceiling mounted fixture. And it's shown in the elevations.
Any other questions? Commissioners Wright or alternate Commissioner Okazawa? Okay. Um, so I would now like to open it up for public comments. Um, for, uh, anything for, against, or about this project?
We did receive, uh, two letters, uh, regarding this project that have been distributed to the staff, or excuse me, to the commission. Um, they can be read into the record if you'd like.
Sure.
Sorry, they seem to have been in this place. Let me, I'll, I'll continue.
And I did not receive them, I don't believe, so I would like to hear them.
Commissioner Wright said that she did not receive them, so she would like to hear them.
Thank you.
I did not receive it either.
Neither did alternate Commissioner.
The first letter was received or stated August twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, it states, as long-time residents in Gainsborough Drive neighborhood, some having homes for over forty-five years. We are concerned with the owners of twenty-seven seventy-five Gainsborough, asking that the house be torn down and rebuilt. To a five thousand one hundred forty-four square foot two-story residence. With an increase in height as well as a six hundred square foot garage. Despite the size of the lot, the house would still be oversized for the neighborhood. Which could end up happening on other lots in the future. Over the years, we have seen numerous homes built on Gainsborough. Most replacing one-story houses, which Gainsborough had a majority of in, in the past. Eight out of the twenty-four homes on the north side of the street have been torn down. With only one replaced with a one-story home at twenty-seven ninety-three Gainsborough, the only one that blends into what used to be a lovely neighborhood. About two years ago, the current owners wanted to tear down this same home and replace it with a two-story house. Fortunately for us, it was not able to be built. There are also three homes on the other side of the street that have also been torn down. The house at twenty-eight sixty was approved after the head of the committee said it would blend with the neighborhood. As it would be similar in style to the one that was already approved at twenty-eight oh-nine. The same house was not completed until the second house at twenty-eight sixty was completed, although left empty for five or six years. We have also heard that someone else near twenty-seven seventy-five wants to tear down their house as well. When will it stop? Are your neighborhoods going through what ours has gone through? Although it has been a bit calm for a short time without too many trucks, bins, et cetera, on the street. Except for the lengthy repair of twenty-seven sixty-three, which was ridiculous to allow the number of years working on it with trucks on the street. And large dumpster, dumpsters in the driveway for so long. We are extremely upset with how our love, once lovely neighborhood has been torn apart. It seems unfair to residents who have given much to the community over many years to have to deal with the destruction. There are plenty of larger houses in San Marino that could be purchased instead of tearing one down and destroying a street. Or perhaps just doing a nice remodel and extension to the property without building another oversized house on Gainsborough. We might add, as you probably know, many of the homes are supposedly being bought for children, although they ended up, end up being rentals with many not being kept. Up or empty for, for years as was twenty-eight sixty. In the past, a San Marino resident noted in the San Marino Tribune. That they would not want to live on Gainsborough since so many homes had been torn down, causing a hodgepodge of homes. We ask that you take our concerns very seriously and not add oversized home to Gainsborough, which will once again take again, take away from the original neighborhood charm. And it's signed by several homeowner, or property owners on Gainsborough. The second letter was received on August twenty-third. It states, we are writing this letter to express our objections to the proposed project located at twenty-seven seventy-five. Gainsborough Drive. As forty-eight-year residents on Gainsborough Drive, we have witnessed many changes in the look, compatibility and character of our unique street. Unfortunately, some of the new two-story homes have deviated from the original charm of our neighborhood. The proposed new two-story house at twenty-seven seventy-five appears to follow this deviation. It has a block-like massive fortress look that dwarfs the homes on either side of it. The raised roofline contributes to this force, fortress look. The exterior design needs a softer revised look. It is unfortunate that the proposed project requires a brand-new house. The process of tear down and building a new house has a bad reputation on this street. Over the years, eight out of twenty-four homes. Over the years, eight out of twenty four houses have been torn down, and that is only on the north side of the street. Only one of the homes torn down was replaced with a single story home. For too long, Gainesboro Drive has been referred to as a construction zone. Some of the projects have taken many years to complete. The resulting look of an abandoned home is an unsightly blight on our neighborhood. It is unfortunate that the owners could not accomplish the added living space with the remodel rather than an all new home. Previous members of the planning commission have referred to our street as a, as a hodgepodge of homes. A characterization that has a bad connotation. This project would only add to this characterization. It is our opinion that the present project would not add to the character and charm of our neighborhood. Signed Edward and Mary Regler.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? I would like to.
Comment from a Richard on the Zoom. Go ahead, Richard.
Hi, yeah, this is Richard. Um, my name is Richard Lee. I'm the resident, uh, at two seventy five Gainesboro Drive. I've lived there for about twenty five years, I believe, or since nineteen ninety six or ninety seven. And I'm a licensed architect and a contractor. Um, I took this, uh, I took a view to the drawing set pretty carefully because, you know, um, understanding that drawings or new construction on the property or within my, my parent, my, my house or, or my family has lived for the last couple, for the last two decades. Um, it's pretty sensitive understanding of with all the, the new construction going on. And, um, I thought it was actually okay. I think it's, um, I think it's, it's within reason. The, the existing house currently has kind of looked like it's been neglected, and I think this new house will add, um, add to the, um, the improvement of the street. Um, I think, uh, the scale is somewhat similar. Um, looking, looking at it in plan view, it seems like it's, it's respectful towards the neighbors with the, uh, the windows and the landscape that are joined to properties. Um, and I, and I welcome the improvement. Um, and I, and it's, and it's, you know, objectively speaking, it's a by right project. It's within the, the rules of the scene. And I, I see no, I miss, I see no objection to recommending this project go forward if Stafford, wow.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on soon?
I'd like.
Excuse me, I spoke too soon. Go ahead, Ms. Clarity.
Oh, thank, thank you. I'm, I'm not quite sure how, my computer's already crashed, so I'm doing something different. Uh, I'm one of the signatures on that first letter and I've lived in this neighborhood uh, since I was extremely young because I've been there forty nine years, like many of the others that have signed that letter. And as Mr. Cervantes probably knows, we've been to many, many meetings for various things. And a lot of times we've been overruled and seen houses that don't blend in and we put up with a lot. And then they're empty for ages. And I mean, it's, Gainesboro's turned into a mess. And people have said that, and as many may know, what, uh, Arcadia was being talked about years, for years that, oh, look how terrible it is. They're tearing down all these houses. Well, guess what? We're the, we're the Arcadia in, on Gainesboro again. And we, we're just tired of doing this over and over again and watching trucks and bins and everything else for years. And then people, you know, these people sound like they may be staying there, but you have no idea how many times we've sat and then it sits empty for years. We had the one down the street set empty for about five or six years, brand new house. That was built because, uh, someone on the design review, design review committee decided that it would be okay to build that one because it would match the one that was already given an okay. Well, the other one, the first one never, it took years to, I mean, that's all we've done is listen to, see things being torn down. When is it going to stop? And, and one thing that some of us have said is just because plans fit in the codes, it doesn't mean it fits in the neighborhood. And I know it looks good, but they don't always come out looking that way. And why does somebody, I, I once had all my relatives come out and I had about eighteen people staying at my twenty seven, twenty six, twenty seven hundred square foot house. And it was fine, not to say that they lived there forever, but I had three kids grow up in this house. And I've lived here, they're obviously gone now, but I've been very happy with it. Why do people need five thousand square feet? And I, I don't care if you've gotten kids coming, I do too. But when is, are you stop, are you going to stop ripping up Gainesboro? So you probably won't agree with me, but a lot of the neighbors that have been here have been taking advantage over the years. And maybe Mr. Cervantes would like to add to that. But he knows I've, no, he doesn't want to talk, but he probably can't. But, um, he's seen us at a lot of these meetings over the years and we have not been happy. And it just seems like, and we've had houses that really do not blend into the neighborhood, except for the one directly across from me. Was torn down, but they made it a lovely one story. I'm not saying that has, that house has to be a one story, but anything that is torn down in the future should not be allowed to be a two story house. Because if you look around this whole area up here, someone on one of the committees a few years back went around and looked at this neighborhood over here and it was mainly one story. And now you can just tell what's been torn down. So anyway, that's all I have to say, and I don't know what you'll do with that, and I.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, with that, I will close the public comments unless there's, okay? I will close the public comments and open it up for commissioner discussion. Uh, Commissioner Chang, why don't you start the?
Sure. Um. Uh, I think the home is not compatible with the neighborhood. I think there has to be traumatic and drastic changes to the current design. I think the plate heights are, uh, way too high. I think if anything, it has to be more in line with what was just approved, uh, if not even lower. Um, the only thing I can say about the plate height, uh, or the, the height of the structure is the, the one saving grace about it would be that it does actually block out the stadium lights from the high school. And I lived, I lived on Gainesboro, uh, for ten years. I sound familiar with, uh, when the football season's out and the marching bands blaring. Um, those lights shine right down the street, uh, throughout the duration of the games. So when I looked at it, I was like, oh, it's going to block up the, the stadium lights. That, that's, you know, good for light pollution prevention. But aside from that detail, uh, I, I'd have to say the, the prob, the house is massive, is massive. It needs to be, the massing needs to be scaled down. Uh, it's not human scale. Um, we are architecturally, you know, details, it is, you know, there's not anything to nitpick or like or dislike about it. It is, it is what it is. And so I think there needs to be improvement and sensitivity to either what the home is there now or what is adjacent. And you do have a kind of interesting modern mid century, you know, to the, to the, uh, south and then kind of a different home to the north. And, you know, to try to wedge in between, it's going to be difficult, but that's what you have an architect for. Um, so I, I would say I would be supportive of a continuance, uh, but it would have to be an agreement that there would be a reduction in square footage and overall plate heights and a redesign of the overall architectural style.
Thank you. Commissioner Dustin.
Uh. I, I agree with Commissioner Chang. The house is not compatible with the neighborhood. Um. Again, you know, the overall height enassing is just, is grossly incompatible, not just incompatible. Uh, you have a full two story facade face and then a slope roof on top of that. Um, you got an overall height within one inch of the maximum permitted, which is a very stark contrast to the more subdued, subdued designs that you find in that neighborhood. Um, ten foot plate heights on both the first and second story are just, that's just wholly inappropriate and not consistent with the existing homes. The project as proposed is two thousand sixteen feet larger than the average size home in the neighborhood. As the staff pointed out, uh, it's nine hundred square feet larger than the largest home on the, in the neighborhood. Um, yes, the lot is much larger and can clearly absorb a large structure. However, reasonable limits apply. Um, code is theoretical and the residential design guidelines are where reasonableness is determined. The street I live on, just three, four blocks up has a very similar situation. Every lot on my block is twelve thousand square feet or less, except for my lot and my immediate neighbors to my east and west. Those three lots have sizes well in excess of twenty thousand square feet. But when you drag down the street, you cannot tell that there's any size difference in the lots. The homes are all modest and they all follow very similar streetscape characteristics. Um. This proposal is not reasonable. I agree with, uh, comments about what, uh, staff made about the inappropriate scale of the front entryway. I think that ties into the inappropriate plate heights. Uh. You know, your door needs to be big enough for a human being to walk through, not a giraffe. Um, also, the driveway and pedestrian walkway scale, as noted by staff, is just way out of scale with what you see in the neighborhood. It just looks, um, out of place. Uh, it will look like a hotel driveway. Um. Smooth stucco, uh, is a contemporary design, uh, detail that is inconsistent with the chosen architectural style. Um, I think the applicant needs to think a little bit about what is their architectural style. They state minimal traditional, but again, as noted by staff, there are a lot of kinds of, uh, architectural details that they're including that are not consistent with that. Uh, and, um, the stone veneer, again, it's, it doesn't look what you would see on a traditional home from the years that most of those homes were built on that street. Um, it, it's a very contemporary design look. I thought brick veneer, uh, I don't, I wasn't sure where staff got the, um, the manufacturing model number for brick veneer. But I looked it up and that actually looked to me like a more acceptable product than this, uh, stone that is made it to the final iteration. Um, I'm concerned about the proposed use of composite shutters as opposed to wood. Again, the residential design guidelines have a strong preference for natural materials. Uh, I'm willing to consider that, but the plans don't specify the manufacturer or model of those composite shut, shut, shutters. So I can't look to see how appropriate they would be and if they're a suitable replacement for wood. It needs to be a very strong case to go against what is recommended in the guidelines. Uh, the plans do not provide specific model numbers for the light fixtures proposed. Um, so it's not possible to appropriately assess the impact of the proposed lighting. The fixtures are, I did look up the manufacturer and model number that they gave. Um, I'm sorry, there was no, uh, they didn't give a specific model number, but I had the manufacturer and the style line. Um. All the, the lights in that range, that style range are between sixteen hundred and twenty four hundred lumens, which is, I mean, it's like a lighthouse. Uh, they also have clear unshielded lensing. Um, there's no, uh, protection for the neighbors. Um, I know two of the lights are going to be back on the garage. But again, depending on which model they are, if they're twenty four hundred lumens and you got two of them, uh, that, that will wash out your football field lights down to the high school. So I would need to see specifically what you are trying to install and where, uh, in order to appropriately a- address that. Um. The bay windows, um. Bay windows, as traditionally constructed, engage the wall at ninety degrees. Whether that's a full frame of a window or it's just a minor frame, uh, of wood and then the windows immediately slope out. But where the bay hits the wall, it's at ninety degrees. It doesn't look like that from what I saw in the rendering. It's kind of hard to make it out, but that i- is important. Um, the bay windows on the east elevation are really gratuitous and they're not necessary to the composition of the facade. In addition, uh, they're really just cantilevered off of the exterior wall. There's no adequate visual support for that bay window. There need to be bases that extend to the ground like on the other bay windows, if they're going to have bay windows there. Or they need to be proper oil windows with an under support that visually transfers back to the exterior wall. Um, the landscape plan is really inadequate. Again, there is not, you know, when I go to the code and I read what it says is required as far as documentation, it says a detailed landscape plan. Um, and I don't think what was provided was detailed. I, I need to know, um, the sizes of every tree that you want to plant and where, um, some of the, some of the plantings that are noted, you know, they're on the, on the, the, the plot plan. Uh, you know, we got big circles indicating the canopy of the tree and they're just labeled existing tree. But the actual tree is really not even what would qualify as a, an established tree in San Marino. They're just tiny little, I mean, I could, I am taller than it, that that's not. Uh, so I think that's a little misleading, um, to do that. And I, I, I think that landscape plan needed, uh, to be a little bit more worked up. Uh, and then lastly, um, I just wanted to comment on, you know, Commissioner Chang indicated he'd be supportive of a continuance. I am extremely cautious about a continuance in this case because, again, the applicant was provided information by staff early on about problems with this design and they chose to ignore that. Um, now, tonight, they say they're willing to be flexible and they just, or, you know, didn't know they were following the numbers, but they were told by staff what was expected. Um, so I'm a little hesitant to support a continuance because I, I don't really think there's, you know, again, as Commissioner Chang said, this is going to require serious amounts of revision, not just a few touch ups. And I don't know that they have that motivation. Um, so that's my thought.
Thank you. Uh, alternate commissioner Okazaki.
You know, I'm also disappointed that, uh, the owners and the architects, uh, they're not want to listen to the staff recommendations. I would, uh, would like to have seen them work more collaboratively with staff. So I think they were trying to guide him, uh, properly to present a more acceptable proposal to the planning commission. They've spent years with, working with us, so they know what's expected. Uh, but, uh, I would also like to support the continuance. It seems like, uh, they've really never had the opportunity to, to come to us before and know our position. Uh, and, you know, you spend a lot of time and money with an architect and, and, uh, the owners, I think, uh, are desires of living in this community, uh, and bringing their grandchildren here. And I, I, I would like to give him a chance to work with staff to come up with a more acceptable down scope proposal as suggested by the board members here, the commissioners, as well as the staff. So I, so I will support a continuance.
Thank you. Vice Chair Brody.
Okay, uh, I think Commissioner Dustin took the wind out of my sails on so many items. Uh, it's listed as a minimal traditional style. I got done, it, it looked to me like a maximum non-traditional style. Uh, it's incompatible within itself and with the homes in the immediate neighborhood. The landscaping plan is just lip service at an attempt to, uh, meet the requirements of the city. It's so out of scale, so massive. I mean, it's the quint, quintessential example of what we don't want to approve. And my concern on a continuance is this is not a matter of tweaking, uh, a particular design so it could fall within acceptability. This is a need for a massive redoing and rethinking of the entire design. This is a huge negative for the street. It's a huge negative for the city. I could not support it. My recommendation personally is to deny this proposal in full.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Well, in the spirit of moving this along, I will just say I agree with all the comments made before. Um, and I too am on the fence about, uh, continuance versus a denial. Um, although, you know, a denial is certainly punitive, uh, when you basically get the same result. We hope anyways, they come back with a, with a house that we could approve or at least certainly closer. Um, I only want to make one comment. You, you know how much I hate Gainesboro and it's, and what really bothers me about this is that I think we've had a lot of applications come through to us, well, at least, um, Chair Dustin and Vice Chair, I mean. Chair Dustin and Vice Chair, I mean, excuse me, Chair Boyle and Commissioner Dustin, at, at least in our term. And it just reminds me that once you give one person something, everybody wants it. And what has happened to Gainesboro is the city allowed poor planning houses that are incompatible to be built, and here we are. So it's up to us to really hold that off. And I think that's challenging in, in light of the history of this. So that's my comment.
Thank you. I as well don't think that I could add much to what's been said. I, I agree with, yeah, I agree with everything that has been said. Similar to Vice Chair Brody and Commissioner Dustin, I also am inclined to move to denial and I think that the, the the, the reason being mostly is because of the discussion with staff to make alter, alterations before it even came to us and that no action was done. I agree with you that it is punitive, but I also feel as though there was an opportunity to come to us with plans that would be closer to approval than what we are seeing before us. I don't know if anybody, after that, if anybody else has any other comments to make based on the discussion they've heard from other commissioners, but I would like to give you all an opportunity if there's anything further to be said.
I know, just have a frank discussion with the applicant. Are they willing to do a wholesale change on the design? And, and size, right? I think a minimum of twenty, for me, for me, I think a minimum of twenty percent reduction in overall square footage and at least a reduction in plate heights by, you know, foot, foot and a half on every floor. And, and if those, if they would be a minimal to those, I think there's a discussion to be had. If not, then I think it's, we, it's worthwhile to just deny the project. Unless you folks feel like that's too much restriction on reducing it to, to a scale of the neighborhood and, and working of the architecture to work.
Design factor here too, it's pretty significant. And you, you bring out a very important point, Commissioner, and that's that if you're reducing the, the project so significantly, is it really a subject of a continuance at this point? And that's my concern.
I was going to ask that same question. If, if it does become an all entirely new design, new architecture, new house, you know, is that a continuance at that point? I know it is, but.
I, I would say I think the house as proposed is big enough to, to sustain that type of reduction and have there be improvements. They did engage a licensed architect, so it's not like some of the other, you know, folks we've had come before us where there is no basis or background in design. I would question to the architect, you know, what were they thinking? And you really need to be honest with yourself of what you were trying to achieve here. But I think it, I think it's reasonable to have a frank discussion with the applicant to, to ask them, right? And, and obviously they come back with not those changes, it's going to be flat out denied. But to your point, Howard, I understand, you know, but whether we want to be punitive or we want to have a discussion now and, and allow them to do so, I understand that they had the opportunity with staff, at staff recommendations. You know, go ahead, John.
I like, you know, one, I have two things. First is I forgot to talk about the balcony. Usually I am always opposed to second floor balconies because they really cause privacy concern. Because of the size of this lot and the orientation of it, I don't personally object to a balcony, but this one is far too large. And it's the way it's designed, it, it does pose some privacy concerns. That being said, my only concern with your suggestion about sort of having this frank discussion is one, they've had the opportunity to have a frank discussion with staff who are basically our, you know, frontline, frontline troops. But the other issue is I'm very uncomfortable with sort of putting in language like, well, at least a twenty percent reduction in volume and a this many feet in plate height, because all those things don't necessarily need to be. I mean, I've seen designs of homes that are, you know, huge square footage wise, but they're done in a way that it's acceptable. So I, I, one, I don't want to put that limitation on the applicant. And two, it's sort of like then they're just sort of, you know, opportunity where they can game the system. If they hit the numbers that we set, then well, why didn't you approve it? And I'm not comfortable with that.
I agree. Commissioner Wright or alternate Commissioner Okazaki, are, I mean, do you have any additional comments or, you know, to, to this conversation we're having here?
Yes, my, my comment is supportive of Commissioner Chang. I would like to ask the owners if they're willing to downscope the project in the general direction that we're talking about without giving them specific numbers. You know, lower the height, plate height and, and, and reduce the square footage. Don't give them a number, but they, you know, fit into the neighborhood a little bit better. Listen to staff much more and believe what they say is true. Not that they could overwhelm them and come to us and try to override the staff recommendation. Give them a chance.
Commissioner Wright?
Ask them.
I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll move to deny DRC twenty there seventy-one HP and twenty there seventy-two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it would have been Vice Chair Brody.
Whatever. Yes, I thought I said yes.
Chair Board?
Yes.
Motion carries. Project is denied.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, conditional use permit number CP twenty dash ten. Can we have the staff report?
Sure. Conditional use permit twenty dash ten is a request to maintain artificial turf at fourteen forty-eight Bradbury Road. The material is currently installed in the front yard of the home. The property was cited in May of twenty twenty, prompting the applicant to apply for a conditional use permit. At December, September twenty twenty meeting, this commission denied the request by four one vote citing aesthetic and environmental concerns. The applicant filed an appeal to the city council in November of twenty twenty. Following the filing of the appeal, staff discussed the request with the city attorney. And it was revealed that Assembly Bill eleven sixty-four restricts the city from prohibiting the installation of artificial turf, but allows cities to impose reasonable restrictions on the installation of this material. The appeal was heard by the city council on June of twenty twenty-one and referred back to this commission with the direction to make findings related to health and welfare concerns to support the denial. Staff recommends the, this commission discuss this matter per the recommendation provided by the city council.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
I'm, I'm trying to just sort of get an understanding of what city council's objective was in sending it back. I don't know how to word this. It says, and I didn't print this one out, did I?
Did you listen to the hearing, John?
I, I believe I did.
Well, I, if I can just jump in then, I, because I did too, and I was actually, I remember what they wanted because I was rather surprised by it. They, they sent it back to ask us to make findings that would allow us to deny this, the turf.
And, and that's what I thought I heard too, but to me that's confusing because, so they're sending it back saying, find a way to do this?
That was my impression. And of course, you know me and my background. Like I said, I was rather surprised, perhaps horrified, but I'm, that's, I'm kidding. No, I, I just, it was, it was, yeah, that was the motion that they made. And that's what they're.
Okay, then I had the same understanding. So I just was confused by it. So thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? Commissioner Chang? Um, is the applicant or the applicant represent, oh, sorry? Yes. Is the applicant or the applicants representative here?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Kang. I'm appearing on behalf of my parents, the property owners of fourteen forty-eight, who are also with us today. I think staff did a fine job going through the timeline of, of why we are here, so I'm going to skip that part. I, I think it is important to note that while our appeal is pending to, to city council, City of San Marino reached out to us and actually advised us that your city attorney discovered this code that's directly on point. And the code itself is quite short, so I'm just going to read it here. It's California Government Code Section five three zero eight seven point seven subsection A. And it reads, "A city, including a charter city, county, or city and county, shall not enact any ordinance or regulation or enforce any existing ordinance or regulation that prohibits the installation of drought-tolerant landscaping, synthetic grass, or artificial turf on residential property." Period. And this law codified the assembly bill that staff mentioned earlier and was effective, became effective as of January first, twenty seventeen. The city was mistaken from the get-go in this case, from the initial citation back in January of twenty twenty to the email that we received from the code enforcement officers explaining the municipal code and why it prohibited artificial turf. To the second email from the same code enforcement officer suggesting that the CUP application was the only way to remedy the situation. Of course, at the time, we relied on, on the information provided to us from the city. The homeowners paid the fourteen hundred and twenty dollars to file the CUP application. Then this commission, of course, denied the CUP. And, and to, to our surprise and shock, just like the commissioner mentioned, the planning commission ultimately denied our appeal. Now, now all of these actions are in direct defiance of California law. And I'm, I personally, I'm not even sure why they remanded the matter. So, so this, this matter now is, is not really about the turf anymore. And we, to be frank, the homeowners don't really care what the result is. Because I, I think California law answers a question very squarely that we are within our right. All we are asking for now is the city to refund the fees that the homeowners needlessly paid and to end this situation that we've been in since twenty twenty. I, I think, I think that's all I have. If the city attorney is here, I would love to hear the city attorney weigh in on the issue. Like I said, it's, I think it's less of a planning issue, more of a, of a legal issue now. I, I don't think it's in the city's best interest to push this further and, and go to court over it. You know, it, I think it could likely get out of hand. I mean, it's not just our property. That would be the, the subject matter of, of whatever claim. It would be all of the homeowners who were affected by the city's mistakes from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one and beyond. So I think it's in everyone's best interest that we can just resolve this matter. Not really sure how procedurally, but if we need to withdraw the application or whatever you need to do. But let's resolve this matter and get the fees refunded so everyone can move on. Thank you.
Could you please repeat the government code that you read off? I, I didn't catch it all.
Sure, of course. It's California Government Code Section five three zero eight seven point seven subsection A.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none are, thank you so much. I will now open it up for public comments for anyone who would like to speak for or against or for, against, or about the project.
Hi, I'm Joyce Getz, who is back in each. I am, have recently become owner of fourteen oh six Bradbury Road. And I'm not, I'm, I share the confusion over what this hearing is act, is actually about. But I would like to make comments that are both specific to this particular install. And perhaps some of my comments about this particular install might be useful for whatever purposes this, this hearing is, is about. Sorry, I'm not sure if this is, if I'm, if it's easy to hear me or not. Okay. So I wanted to point out that like, like several streets in San Marino, this street has a lot of nature, flora and fauna. This kid says, this street has kids playing on it. It's across the street from the high school. There's a lot of students around. There's a lot of dog walkers, cyclists, people taking walks. So I want to say that all artificial turf, according, I'm not an expert on artificial turf, obviously. But I did do a lot of research on our artificial turf in the past year. And what I found out is if you filter through all of the noise, which is, there's a lot of noise in this, in this area, in this industry, because industry people are trying to promote their materials and, and there isn't really a lot of independent information. But what I've gathered is that all artificial turf is hotter than natural grass or other natural plantings. So I'm concerned about heat. All manufacturers claim that, that theirs is cooler than, than artificial turf was twenty years ago. But they're still acknowledging that it's hotter than, than the natural, the natural grass. In some cases, they have, there have been artificial turf that gets to as, as hot as a hundred and fifty degrees. So I'm concerned about this from a health and safety and welfare concerns regarding the additional heat on residents and passersby and even animals. And speaking of animals, one of my other concerns about artificial turf and certain, in, on certain streets where there are a lot of animals, people, is that I learned that regardless of the drainage or how good the drainage is of a certain artificial turf manufacturer, one of its fatal flaws is that all artificial turf, turf does not absorb animal waste, whether it's from pets walking by, even with the landscaping obstacles that are installed and the many animals that produce fecal and urine waste, like we just had to remove a raccoon from our property. A dead raccoon. We've also observed rats and possums. Of course, coyotes and peacocks are in our area now. So waste from those animals is, is a factor. It may not be the only factor, but it is a factor. And it's a factor that is in many ways unique to our area because the surrounding communities of, as we know, have are characterized, characterized with a lot of infill and not very much nature. And nature brings animals. So that's something like, I think, a little bit unique and special to, to most of our community, certainly not Huntington Drive, but certainly many of our residential streets. The, another concern I have is about combustibility and flammability. Artificial turf is, because it's made from petrochemicals, is highly flammable, particularly with certain types of infill. We, I would like to know about what kind of infill and what kind of installation this project had. I don't know if it was provided. But that is a factor. In the same way that we look at roofing materials, combustibility, I think we also need to get more information, preferably from an independent source or rating agency about the flammability about this particular product. A third issue in terms of health, safety, and welfare is drainage. One of the main arguments underlined in the appeal from, I think it was the applicant, is the claim, quote, "The Sierra Pro material drains at a faster rate than natural grass," unquote. And there is no substantiation to this claim, other, it's not given in the materials. Perhaps there is a claim made by the manufacturer, but unless there's an independent agency or testing or something that's reliable and not funded by the manufacturer, I think that that should be something that is looked at a little bit more closely. One expert, one expert on material who actually seems, according to what I was reading, seems to install and sell the material, said, "Just because your turf product drains thirty-plus inches per hour per square yard does not mean your subbase does." So the subbase is also something that should be taken into consideration and a factor in what kinds of, in what kinds of, of installs are made. in what kinds of, of installs are made on this property and other properties. And, um, and speaks to the, the drainage, um, that's possible. Um, we don't know about this install. We don't know about the subbase. We don't know how many drainage holes are punched in the backing. Um, we also don't know, um, you know, what's underneath this, the subbase. Um, the, I think that my final point, uh, that I'd like to make about the, um, about this particular uh install is, um, and, and this would apply to some other streets in San Marino, many areas of San Marino. Um, I believe especially the southern part of San Marino, uh, is we famously have clay soil, a soil that is characterized by compacted clay. If you go to any gardening center or ask anybody who knows about gardening, they will say, "One of the biggest problems in our city, which is, after all, it was founded as a garden city by Henry Huntington, you will, you will find out that one of our challenges here to our gardening is, are the, are the uh place, is the characteristic of compact clay soil, which does not drain very well." So one of the people who, um, who was, um, who sells this product was saying, "If your subbase is poor quality," meaning, which he had previously in that um information included clay soil, "I recommend overexcavating, then removing and replacing it with quality imported drainage materials." Aggregates for subbase materials should be those that are absorbent and allow permeability such as limestone, limestone chat, um, or crushed or decomposed granite. So we don't know if that was installed in this property or not. I think that would be useful information to ask about and, uh, for both this install and potential, um, future installs. Um, are there drains that would be required, like French drains? Uh, catch basins, exit drains? Where are, where is the uh water from the gutters on the house flowing to? Is it flowing to the artificial turf? Because if it's flowing to the artificial turf, that can cause flooding. It can cause accumulated moisture if there is not enough drainage underneath. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Is there anything online? Oh, yes? Uh, yes?
Uh, if artificial turf is really so bad, San Marino City Co., Building Co. has always allowed artificial turf on the side yard, on the backyard. So that's my point. And the whole football field in San Marino are highest artificial turf. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, who is that speaking?
That was the homeowner, Commissioner Wright.
Thank you.
William Kim. Are there any other public comments on Zoom for public comments? Okay, I will close this portion of the public comments and move to Commissioner deliberation. Uh, Commissioner Dustin, let's start with you.
Uh, hang on, I gotta get my, it's the only place I could find the agenda was online, so hold on. I don't really have um a lot of comments. I don't really have a lot of answers. I just have a lot of questions. You know, basically, the finding that is the sort of tipping point for me here is is this installation something that will um be detrimental to the health, safety of the community? And what is the community? Is it the neighborhood? Is it the city? Is it the San Gabriel Valley? Is it the United States? Is it the planet? I don't know how far you want to extrapolate it out. We know we're in a very difficult situation with environmental concerns these days. And I think the more you look at it as a global issue, it clearly is something that you could more easily demonstrate to be detrimental to health and safety. The more local you get to it, I think that concern sort of washes out. So I don't know what limitations there are on how far out to extrapolate this. The, I have another question that dropped my mind. Oh, here it is. I wrote it down. Um, yeah, as the one resident mentioned, um, the manufacturer's website, I went to it as well, trying to get information about this particular product, because again, I think it's important not to speak in generalities about artificial turf in general. We need to talk about this particular product and its performance as established by studies, not some broad concept. And I found a lot of broad generalizations from the manufacturer about how good this product is and why it's better than others, but I found no links or any information where I could get some, specific information to substantiate the claims that they were making. Um, so then my question is, well, you know, this isn't a court. Where is the burden of proof? Do they have to prove that it's safe and not detrimental, or do we have to prove that it is harmful or not safe? So I'm, I'm really sort of treading water here, and I'm gonna wait to hear what everybody else says before I sort of congeal my thoughts, but those are some of the questions mulling around in my head.
Uh, alternate Commissioner Okazaki.
My comments are that, uh, we, we have to be law-abiding as a city, and if the state law allows artificial turf and the state law does not specify the kind of uh turf and manufacturers and so forth, I think, uh, we are obligated to follow it as a city, and we should modify the city ordinance uh and, and remove the restriction.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Brody.
Yeah, I, I, one of the questions that I have on this, this is a two thousand seventeen enactment. Uh, did it, uh, was the city attorney involved in looking at the legislative analysts that, uh, put together uh, some information for the legislators to vote on? Are there any annotations since two thousand seventeen on this section? Has there been, uh, any, uh, court cases, uh, where the issue has come up and been resolved? You shaking your head yes?
I'm listening, I'm listening.
Oh, you're listening?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you were about to tell me something.
I can answer that question.
Great.
And again, thank you for, uh, the questions, and again, it's nice to be here. This is, uh, my first planning commission meeting here. As you know, we, we just came on board earlier this month. Um, with regard to this particular issue, the applicant described the law, uh, from Government Code Section five three zero eight seven point seven. That, that is a correct reading of what the law says. It says that no city can enact or enforce an ordinance uh, that prohibits the installation of drought-tolerant landscaping, synthetic grass, or artificial turf on residential property. What a city can do is impose reasonable restrictions on the type of drought-tolerant landscaping, synthetic grass, or artificial turf that may be installed. Then there's some exceptions or some conditions on that, provided that that restriction on the type of turf or, or, or artificial, uh, landscaping does not substantially increase the cost of installing drought-tolerant landscaping, synthetic grass, or artificial turf, does not effectively prohibit the installation of drought-tolerant landscaping, synthetic grass, or artificial turf, and does not significantly impede the installation of drought-tolerant landscaping. So there are no cases that I'm aware of, and I did some research in preparation for today's meeting, and I, I reached out to colleagues to see if they've had any experience applying this relatively new law. I have not, uh, I'm not aware of any issues that have come up, and I'm not aware of any cases that have interpreted this. I think, uh, one way to interpret this, these, the other provisions in that law is that uh, you, you can have a list of, of types of turf that would be acceptable, provided that the, the, the types of turf that you choose are not exorbitantly expensive, such that it makes it impossible to install that type, to install, uh, artificial turf on your property. So that's what the government code provides. And that, uh, did go into effect January one, twenty seventeen.
Yeah, I got that.
Yeah.
Uh, how about the legislative, uh, analysis that, uh, led to that? Sometimes that could be, uh, eye-opening. Was there anything there?
I, I, I didn't see anything that would inform the, the decision. I would like to take another look at it, but I think the issue here is that in terms of the decision that you're being asked to take tonight and what's on the agenda is the consideration of the CUP and whether or not you can make the findings to either, uh, deny the CUP or approve the CUP. So in terms of staying within the bounds of the Brown Act, uh, my recommendation would be to, to take a look at the action that is before you. You can't take an action outside of that, that constraint.
But we certainly can ask for, uh, advice as to the factors that we should be considering uh, when you look at the, uh, the essential elements that are, uh, basically stated by yourself uh, and then apply those. I mean, we have to live within the bounds of, of this government code section, whether we like it or not. So it's a matter of, uh, what factors are there to be considered? Uh, and apparently, what I'm gathering from you is if we impose reasonable restrictions, whatever they may be, and that may be by ordinance, I take it?
Ordinance or resolution.
Or resolutions, and we need some science behind that, which we don't have in front of us right now.
Well, we do.
Well, I'm talking about where we had a city council pass and so forth. Uh, we're really blind, blinded away. And then we don't have cost factors and things like that considered, uh, given all of these things. It's kind of puzzling as to, uh, our function here with this. My just, my thought.
Commissioner Wright, I'm sorry, is that okay if I'm?
I'm done.
Okay, Commissioner Wright.
Actually, I wanted to ask the city attorney for a clarification, um, on the, a city being able to impose reasonable restrictions on the type of the, um, artificial turf. So you say ordinance or resolution, so you don't think that we have the authority to impose reasonable restrictions as part of a quasi-judicial? CUP?
The, the way I read that is that it would be something that would be analyzed separately, that it would be through an ordinance or resolution.
Exactly.
I bet it the same, but I wanted to ask if you, uh, if you felt that way. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Um, okay, well, in all seriousness about the city council act, I understand completely why they, uh, made the motion they did, uh, because I agree with them. I do not like artificial turf, and I would prefer that we do not have artificial turf in our beautiful city. However, however coming, um, to me, the state law is very clear, and, uh, we have not, we have not, uh, adopted an ordinance or a resolution. Um, this is something that's extremely common in cities, uh, due to all kinds of reasons, including priorities and resources and et cetera, et cetera. And this won't be the first time that we wish we had an ordinance on the book. Um, and it won't be the last time. It's just, uh, sadly, the way it goes. For me, I find it very frustrating, but also fairly typical. So we don't have an ordinance on the books, so we are not allowed to impose any restrictions because we don't have anything that gives us that authority. Uh, the state law says we can't prohibit the installation with those, uh, those restrictions anyway, so we can't prohibit it. Um, and here it says we can't, uh, en- enforce any existing ordinance that prohibits the installation. I think it's, uh, exceedingly clear, and I think that here we, um, we need to, whether we like it or not, follow the law. It reminds me a lot of when wireless antennas were first, uh, coming everywhere and, and communities were all up in arms, and actually, I think the federal government, who imposed a law that said, "Guess what, cities? You cannot even look at health and safety when you look at wireless antennas." Um, and of course, everybody wanted to say they were unsafe and, you know, health reasons. Federal government took that completely away from cities and allowed us to only look at aesthetics, as I recall, maybe privacy. So this is, this is not new. This is what we live with now. Look at all the housing. Well, for me, it's very frustrating, but I think, uh, that we, uh, that, that we should follow the law and allow this, uh, turf. Oh, and as far as refunding the fees that the, the, uh, parent talked about, you know, fees are for the cost of the service. Fees are to help with, uh, with the processing of the appeal, which of course, obviously, our staff did. If we had to refund fees every time we, we granted an appeal, you know, cities would probably be bankrupt. So, so there's no basis for refunding fees. I just wanted to say that as well. That's just my opinion. Um, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang.
Yeah, um, I actually, uh, like the install that is installed at this property. I was one of the few, uh, design review committee members that was in support of the installation. You know, we are, we, we live in a desert, and we currently are dealing with a, a serious drought and drought tolerant, whether it be drought-tolerant landscaping, artificial turf, et cetera, is gonna become more and more prominent, no matter how we like it or not. Um, I understand, you know, that the, the neighborhood and the city as a whole, uh, has, you know, natural grass and, and, and we prefer natural grass. I think the majority of folks that choose to live in San Marino would probably prefer natural grass. And this particular homeowner wanted to go with artificial turf, and, um, clearly by California law, that's their prerogative, as long as you don't make an undue burden upon them with conditions that prevent them from doing so. So, um, I think, you know, there's, there's good points raised in actually the application. I mean, if you look at other homes on the street, there's other homes that are not as well-maintained. There's other homes that aren't as aesthetically pleasing with, uh, uh, curb appeal. I think this home has really good curb appeal. You know, there's a home directly across the street with just all, uh, drought-tolerant landscaping, and if every home in San Marino wanted to do that, they apparently can do so too. So I think this is actually a lesser of, of two evils in this instance, and I, I continue to support the, what the homeowner has done. Um, again, I think it's gonna ultimately come to what the individual homeowner wants to do and being cognizant of, you know, water and their own pro- personal preferences of maintenance, et cetera. But I think the allowing of this instance is not gonna come a floodgate of every single homeowner in San Marino switching to, uh, artificial turf. So I would, I guess we, we, I could continue to, I would support the, uh, the appeal of, of, of the applicant and that the, the turf remain. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, well, so when I approached this, of course, I was looking specifically at what we were asked to do, which was to, you know, evaluate the findings of the conditional use permit. And for me, what did stand out is the health, safety, peace, morals, and comfort in general, wel- welfare of the community. Um, I do, just because it was, it, sorry, Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Okazaki, I did not email this, but I did do some research, and I thought that I would just share with the other commissioners. Um, these are, I provided a list, um, Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Okazaki, just of peer-reviewed scientific research that shows the detriment of astroturf um, and synthetic grass, and I just wanted to provide it in the sense that there are very, the, again, these are peer-reviewed in scientific journals that include the American Chemical Society, Chemosphere, the, um, uh, Journal of Hazardous Materials, and the National Academy of Science, um, that have all done extensive studies on astroturf, off-gassing, uh, chemical leaching into groundwater, and it is unsubstanti- sorry, it is clear evidence that astroturf is, um, detrimental to human health. Um, I think the most, uh, important finding that I showed here is that in doing a vertebrate study of artificial turf and the, and the systemic toxicity that in vertebrates, uh, um, of, just, um, I'm sorry, mild exposure can lead to severe de- developmental malformations, reduce growth, and specifically impair the development of the brain. reduce growth and specifically impaired the development of the brain and cardiovascular system, which were associated with gene dysregulation in aerial hydrocarbon receptor stress response and thyroid hormone pathways. I am very aware that I often sound like a broken record as it pertains to climate change and the responsibility that we all have towards our community. I am very aware that we have no legal standing to deny something based on the climate crisis because despite our best efforts, we do not have a climate action plan in place. And I think that that is a tragedy, given the most recent report with regards to the UN IPCC report. And so I always feel that I am very duty bound to talk about these issues. And the grass is a byproduct of fossil fuels and petrochemicals. It does without question, and this is just five examples of the 25 I found of, again, peer reviewed scientific research showing that there are severe safety and health issues to humans and the community because of this product. So if I were looking at the conditional use permit, I would want to deny the appeal or accept the appeal with conditions for approval. One of which, as we talk about, as Commissioner Chang brought up, the, the maintenance of other people's properties, you know, the maintenance of our, of our gardens and yards. The synthetic turf does wear away and it does have to be replaced. And there needs to be, everything that I have read has shown that it needs to be annually inspected and maintained. And I don't know if we have the ability to add a condition at this point. Hold on, let me, let me finish and then we can open it up for discussion. I would like there to be a requirement of filing of proof of annual inspection and completion of maintenance work. I think in the long run, we need to create a pre-approved list of acceptable brands and material that is allowed through the California state law. Just as we do with roofing material, if this is going to be our way of life now to have synthetic turf around, then I think we as a community need to decide what kind of material we do allow. And it sounds as though we are allowed to, to have those. We can impose certain rules like that as long as it is not a financial detriment and et cetera, everything that you said. Oh, that was a question directed at the city attorney. And I will also say, just as a point of fact, the Office of Environmental Health and Hazard Assessments in the state of California started an ongoing study into synthetic, synthetic turf that started in June 2015. They have been meeting every three months since then and they plan to finalize their report in the next year. And I think that that will be very informative to us as we move forward to show that maybe there will be action for the law to change. I know I'm being very long-winded. I guess my one question that I would have for the city attorney is, are we making a decision on the CUP right now? And if so, if we can't, if, if, if we can't like find, if we can't agree with the findings in terms of what is required for CUP approval, is that what we are being tasked to do or? Sorry, sorry, Director Sivantes, I always look at you. I mean, are we, is what's on the table the CUP?
Yeah, that's what's on the agenda tonight. So that, under the Brown Act, is the action that you're being asked to consider. This comes in an interesting context because of the, the nature of the law. The provisions that, you know, that were signed into law by the Governor of Hubei, 1164. So the issue in front, I'm sorry to interrupt, the issue in front of you is the CUP.
What, I guess the next question is, is I doubt that it would go this way, but let's say this body decided to deny the appeal based on the findings of not being able to find, have the findings of the CUP. Is that neat because the law is in place anyway?
That is something that I would have to discuss at a, at another time and not in the context of this particular meeting. I did want to ask you about the peer reviewed scientific research.
Yes.
You provided, did you provide a copy of that to the applicant?
I didn't. I, I, and I'm very happy to. This was something that I was putting together today and I hand delivered it. But I just made copies as I was, before I came over.
Understood. And I just think it would be proper at this time to give a copy to the applicant. And I have a copy. Or do you have an extra copy?
I do. I do have an extra copy that I'm happy to give to the applicant.
Why don't you hold on to that one and I'll, I'll provide one to the applicant.
Okay. So I guess with that, I don't know if we need to have further discussion or if somebody wants to make a motion. Commissioner Dustin?
I have a couple more things to just roll over. I know it's getting late. So again, this would be to the city attorney. And again, I know this is sort of outside the scope of the CUP, but I just kind of want to get my head wrapped around this. So you, you read this state code section, I guess, and it says, you know, the you can, you can put reasonable restrictions. When, when it says here reasonable restrictions on the type of drought tolerant landscaping, comma, synthetic grass, comma, or artificial turf. Does that mean, I don't know how to word this, is this all or nothing? Or can it be a combination of these? Like, can, can a city say, well, you can't put in synthetic turf or artificial turf, but you can put in drought tolerant landscaping, which is all natural products?
I, I don't think you can pick one of these and, or, and only allow that. I think that the
You have to allow for all categories, but you can put reasonable restrictions on each category.
Correct.
So even if, let's, I'm going to just make up numbers here. Even if it costs, you know, $300 a square foot to put in synthetic turf, but you can put in zero escape, all natural landscaping for $200 a square foot. I mean, the applicant can't make the argument that you're making him pick a more expensive option. It's a less expensive option. But that doesn't count because the three categories are, have to be determined independently?
I, I read that as saying that you cannot prohibit the installation of any of those.
Any of those three categories, okay.
But then you can pick the types of, of, of the types of material that fall into those categories. Impose reasonable restrictions, provided you don't effectively prohibit it or make it substantially more expensive or, you know, impede the installation.
I disagree with that reading of it. It's in the disjunctive, which is totally different than putting in an and in there. So what they're trying to do, and that's why I asked you about the legislative analysis. What they're trying to do is have drought tolerance something. And it could be A, B, or, or C. You can't knock them all out. But you have to provide for some type of drought tolerance. Now, if they wanted to make sure that you couldn't knock any out, it would be the disjunctive or in there. And, and whatever it's worth. I headed up the Civil Division at San Diego County Council's office. And I'm very familiar with municipal law. And that, that is something that we really need to research and do some sharp analysis of. I think it's very important. And, and as correctly pointed out by Commissioner Wright, we are a body that executes. We are not a legislative body. It's imperative that the city council understand that they are the body that makes the law. They're the body that puts together the ordinance. We simply execute on that.
Correct. And, and I'm sorry, I just, I just want to add to that, that we are not being asked to do anything but determine if we can, if we have, if we agree with the findings of the CUP.
Correct.
For me, I cannot agree with that because I believe that in this particular case, there is detriment to the health, safety of our community. So I'm just, so if, so right now, we, we as the planning commission, the only thing we are tasked to do is to look at the CUP and agree with the findings or not agree. And I, I'm saying that because that, that's it. I, I really appreciate all of this discussion and I think it's a very, it's a discussion that needs to be had. But, you know, again, to prove this, all four findings have to be met. And beyond that, whatever we vote, if we agree that all, all four findings have been met or not, that is all we are tasked to do. And from that point forward, it is the responsibility of city staff, city council and the city attorney to handle the repercussions. So on that case, I would like to, is there any other discussion that needs to be had about that?
Yeah, let me just say this. I'm sorry for poking myself in this thing. We can, under the conditional use permit, put a timeframe on it. Because we are concerned about the deterioration of the product. Can we put a timeframe? We'll issue a CUP in this case pursuant to the law for only five years. Can we do that?
Well, typically, you don't put a, a time limit on a CUP. Are you talking about an inspection?
Yes.
Or just to examine?
Where, where we can have some control over the deterioration aspect of the product.
Well, you may walk on the record and I might defer to Mr. Sivantes, what the shelf life is for this particular product or what is, what is listed as a shelf life for this particular product?
I, I, actually, the applicant might be the best person to answer that question.
I saw that on the website.
I saw it on the website too. I think they said 10 years.
I thought it was eight.
Oh, okay.
I'm with eight because that's what I
Okay. But, but still, I mean, again, I guess the question is, is that if all we are tasked to do right now is to appeal, approve or deny the appeal based on the findings of, of a conditional use permit, can we add contingencies? And I, I guess I'm looking, I don't, I don't know whom to look to at this point. I mean, like, can we say we will approve this with the contingency that there is an annual maintenance and proof submitted to the city staff?
In general, the property owner is going to be responsible for the upkeep of whatever is installed on, on his or her property. And that would be the same, the same would be true for this artificial turf. They can't let it deteriorate, fall apart. That would be potentially a property maintenance issue that could be brought up under code enforcement. And that wouldn't necessarily have to be a condition in the CUP.
Right, okay.
Chime in on this one because this was her, land use was her thing.
You know, yeah, this is so interesting because to me the, the CUP is inappropriate. We, we don't have the authority to have a CUP because of the state law. So to say that we're, we're acting on the CUP in front of us, I mean, I get that. That's what's in front of us. But to me, that's been superseded, if you will, by, by state law. And we don't really have the authority to act on a CUP. That's my feeling about it.
I, I don't know. I hear what you're saying. I don't know how to reconcile that because, I mean, that is what we're like I said, that is what we're being asked to do. And beyond that, the responsibility would then fall to the city attorney, the city council and the city staff to to justify that or or not. Yeah, I mean, you know what I mean? Like, it is then, it is on them to then have the repercussions of what we have done.
Can I ask a question of Director Sivantes?
Yes.
We have a procedure and a process for monitoring the appearance of front yards in general. So if somebody's lawn is dead beyond a certain amount or the irrigation is not appropriate or there's a dead tree, there are ways the city can intervene and say, this doesn't meet aesthetic criteria. You need to fix this. Will there be any problem for city staff to do that in a synthetic landscape?
And, and that's a great point. In fact, this issue started with a code enforcement matter. Code enforcement drove the neighborhood, saw the condition and cited. And so that would be no different than a live landscape design. Where if a tree is dead or overall there's clear property maintenance issues, we would conduct a code enforcement case on that situation. We have seen other types of artificial turf in the city that are currently installed that are now starting to mimic the effect of carpet, which you start seeing the seams rip apart.
There's a, there's an installation on Bradbridge down the street where there's wrinkles in it now.
And that's why I'm bringing that up because that's exactly the one I'm, I'm thinking about. So driving down, as a code enforcement officer, they will see that and can very well conduct code enforcement on an appearance factor on that property.
So, but again, the fix, I mean, I'm thinking of this as a homeowner. The fix for that with artificial turf could potentially be far more expensive than trying to dig up some dead shrubs and replant them or reseed a dead patch on your lawn. I mean, because it's not like you can just cut out a patch of turf and stick it in. I mean, it has to be seamless and fairly large expanses of materials from, from my understanding of how they install it.
The cost factor associated with, with code compliance is not our concern. It's, it's dealing with the matter in terms of a, a consistent appearance along the street with respect to landscaping or overall appearance.
Okay. I'm siding with, with Jerry's, sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner Wright's point of view. I don't see where we have any authority whatsoever to make a finding on a conditional use permit where we have no ordinances on reasonable restrictions whatsoever. And we're faced with a government code section and enactment, which to me has a disjunctive in it, but no one has come out and said, well, some court or judge has ruled that it's an alternative. You could have drought tolerant, this, that, or the other thing, just as long as you have some kind of drought tolerant alternatives. I don't see that. I, we're kind of flying blind here. And you know, I'm, I'm inclined to, in all frankness, to to neither approve or disapprove and, and just abstain, I guess. I don't know what other alternative we have, Commissioner Wright. What do you think?
I, I think we grant the appeal. Right? Isn't it an appeal in front of us or deny the conditional use? Oh, that's, they sent it back to us. That's right. They sent it back to us.
Yeah, we're, it's, what is before us is to approve or deny the conditional use permit.
I think we have to grant, to, to approve the conditional use personally.
Why don't we have a motion?
Yeah, so I would move to approve conditional use permit number CUP 20-10.
I'll second.
Can we have the roll call?
Commissioner Wright? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yeah, I will also say yes, but I want, I, I just want to send a message to the council that we need, we are a body that executes on ordinances and, and plan. We need guidance with regard to imposing reasonable restrictions under this code section. We have very little in the way of alternatives presently, presently before us. And I will also say yes.
I have a point of it for me, a point of information that I'd like to ask before you final the, the decision. And, and that is, do, do you want to or are you considering the homeowner's request for the refund of the fee or you denying that?
No, it's not a part of this.
Okay.
Chair Boyle?
No.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on, agenda item number six. Moving on, agenda item number six, appeal of determination of a tree removal permit.
Thank you, Chair members of the planning commission. On June 7th of this year, the city arborist performed an inspection on, on said property seventeen sixteen Lorraine Road as it relates to a request for a tree removal application. The tree removal application requested the removal of four trees. Um, all trees are located in the front, side, and rear. The, uh, three of the trees were granted for removal by the urban forester with the exception of one, which is the uh, Mexican fan palm tree located on the front yard area adjacent to the driveway. Uh, the urban forester did not find that the tree, or said tree, uh, to be a hazardous condition to the public, and, uh, and denied the request for the removal of the tree. Subsequent to the removal of, subsequent to the, uh, uh, this denial, the applicant filed a timely appeal uh, on the consideration of the Mexican fan palm tree. And so in looking at an independent review by myself of this condition, uh, I have to agree with the urban forester that I, upon inspection, could not find that the, uh, this specific tree uh, meets the findings for removal. In this case would be, uh, I would have to consider it to be a hazardous condition, uh, for the public. Uh, I realized that the applicant had provided information in their appeal letter regarding the droppings of the palm fronds. Uh, but in my review of the situation, as well as, uh, the urban forester, a maintenance plan of said tree consistently mitigate that, that issue. There was also claims of the uplifting of the adjacent driveway. Uh, again, upon inspection, could not associate the uplifting with the palm tree. I did, uh, come to the conclusion that the adjacent oak tree nearby was the culprit to the uplifting of the driveway. As you can see, the roots of that tree are, are exposed, uh, above grade. I also walked the neighborhood to look at existing similar trees uh, in their states, and could not find any other condition with a Mexican fan palm tree and uplifting of structures. And so with that said, given the, the lack of the inability of meeting the findings for a heritage tree, staff recommends the planning commission deny the appeal and deny the request to remove the Mexican fan palm tree. And open for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Any questions? Okay, um, is the applicant or the applicant's representative here?
Good evening. Thank you all for your time and, you know, for your service to our community. My name is Brian Dingling. I'm the owner of the property seventeen sixteen Lorraine Road. My wife and I purchased the property about a year and a half ago, and have since, um, enjoyed our time settling in and getting to meet our wonderful neighbors on Lorraine Road. Uh, I grew up in San Marino. I graduated from San Marino High School. And my wife and I have four kids under the age of eight that are also proudly attending San Marino schools. Or in the, in the case, my three-year-old will proudly attend shortly, the San Marino school. Uh, so I, I say that only to, to reinforce that. I, I appreciate uh, the, the beauty of San Marino. I appreciate, uh, the rules that are in place to protect uh, the beauty and keep our, our city beautiful. Uh, so, uh, as was noted, we submitted a request to remove a few trees, uh, that have been causing damage to our property. Uh, as noted, the request removed three of the trees in the backyard uh, that were causing damage to the property were approved. However, the request removed that the palm tree was denied. So as I noted in my appeal letter, uh, the palm tree is located on the very side of my property, uh, straddling the property line uh, that I share with, uh, our neighbors to the west. Um, it has caused damage to the driveway and to the actual property fence. Um, in fact, the, the driveway is, is, uh, is so damaged that, um, I want to replace it, but I'm having second thoughts about the expense of replacing the driveway if this tree is going to remain there and just continue to cause, uh, damage in the future. And, uh, but most importantly to my wife and me, more important than all of that is the, the safety risk. So e- even in the short time we've been there, we witnessed several dead fronds that have fallen from the tree onto both my property and my neighbor's property, and this happens especially during periods of, of high winds. So these fronds, um, land on our roof, they land on our neighbor's roof, they land on our car. And, uh, on two occasions in just the past six months, they've come within feet of, of striking one of our children while they're playing in the front yard. So, um, as you can imagine, these palm fronds are huge, they're heavy, they're sharp, they fall very unpredictably. Um, one of them I, I picked up from my front yard was uh, almost the size of a surfboard, and, uh, and they fall, and that is a, a terrifying feeling, um, especially when you have young children like I have. So, uh, our neighbor to the west has also approved its removal, as has the arborist that we hired, who recommended in his report that the tree be removed. Uh, that report was attached to the appeal letter. It's, it's very thorough, so I apologize for its length. We, uh, we have a master landscape plan that, uh, that, uh, contemplates and includes the replacement of the three trees that have been approved for removal, removal with four trees, uh, into, in the backyard. So with granted permission to remove the palm tree, we will happily plant new trees that are on the proved heritage list, um, as directed by the city. So, as I mentioned earlier, um, my wife and I, I love and appreciate the beauty of San Marino. I'm certainly not in the business of removing trees for, just for the sake of removing trees. Um, so our desire with the appeal is to prevent further damage to our property, to our neighbor's property, uh, to eliminate a safety risk, and, uh, and certainly to plant new trees that will add to the ongoing beauty of our neighborhood on Lorraine Road.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you so much. Um, I will open it up for public comments for anybody who wants to speak about this agenda item. No? So I will close it for public comments and have a commissioner deliberation. Uh, Vice Chair Brody, why don't you start us off?
Usually, I'm certainly, uh, sensitive to, uh, tree removal, but, uh, uh, this tree, uh, in all frankness, uh, serves very little purpose other than to create a, a hazard, and I would be in favor of its removal. We are looking at a, an applicant who's uh, in the process of, uh, replacing, uh, with four trees uh, on the city heritage list. I, I see no negative here, and I see a lot of negative in denying this appeal, considering the tree that is requested to be removed.
Thank you. Uh, alternate commissioner Okazaki?
I, I also support the removal, given the fact that you know, the safety is one of my concerns, and I have seen palm tree leaves in my neighborhood that are have, have dropped, and they are of significant size, and if you have little kids, uh, I, I would be concerned as well. Uh, and, and personally, I, I don't think palm trees have a benefit to, uh, cleaning our air uh, as do all other, uh, green plants, uh, trees. So I'm in support of the homeowner uh, making, uh, improvements, uh, to, uh, his at his, uh, neighbor's property, primarily for what he considers as a safety concern. I support that.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes, I agree, and it's funny because I said the exact same thing as Vice Chair Brody, that that tree served no purpose when I looked at it. Um, as to the findings we have to make, certainly, we could, um, I think, make the, the, the safety finding as one, but I, um, I would prefer to see that tree gone and, and other heritage trees and, uh, to replace it.
Thank you, Commissioner Chang.
Uh, I agree with what's been said. I've personally been hit by a palm frond. It is not a nice situation. Uh, my folks live on, uh, corner of Lorraine and West Haven, and West Haven's one of those most beautiful streets with, uh, palm-lined streets. Uh, and, you know, those fronds, when, when, when the wind kicks up, they do blow and they do fall, and, you know, I'd say, in that, in those instances, you can avoid walking the sidewalk, and so you don't get injured. But given that this is on the homeowner's property, right on his driveway, we couldn't ask him reasonably to restrict his access and his children to play on the property, so I think it's, uh, well, request is, is approvable, and I'd support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Dustin?
Uh, well, I guess I'm taking a slightly different look at this. Um, you know, in, in this situation, I'm, I'm looking at the, the needs of the homeowner, but I'm also concerned with protecting and preserving process. Um, you know, just as much as in the last case, I abhor artificial turf, and I think it has no place in our city. With the ordinances that we have right now, I can't say no to that. And so even though it tears me up to do so, I have to preserve the process. And in this case, it's similar. We had a very similar case last month. Um, homeowner wanted to remove a bunch of trees. Um, and the reasoning that was given to remove them, I don't think, if you read through our preservation, tree preservation ordinance, we, we really didn't follow that ordinance very well, uh, and I was very worried about it, and then I went home because I was so upset. Uh, actually, because I, I also voted, uh, to allow the removal of the tree. And I felt a little better after familiarizing myself with the tree ordinance, and it helped me for tonight, because there's a difference between last month's case and this month's case. Uh, last month's case was an established tree. And there is an out. There's the health and safety factor, but there's also a out that allows you to remove a tree as long as there's an established re-landscaping plan that will provide uh, an adequate canopy replacement sustainable over time. That's what the ordinance says for an established tree, but the rules are different for a heritage tree or oak trees. That, that B, subsection B out for the landscape plan does not exist for heritage trees or oak trees. The only option for removal is a hazardous situation. And, uh, city staff have indicated that that hazardous situation can be appropriately mitigated through proper annual or regular scheduled maintenance. So, again, I have to look at not only the needs of the homeowner, but I also have to look at our ordinances, and we need to follow what is there. And so, uh, I, I did not see um, safety factors that could not be mitigated. And so I don't know that I can, uh, go for a removal.
I, um, looked at and interpreted this agenda item in the same way that Commissioner Dustin has. Um, I reread the ordinance, and I do see the difference between the, um, the, how the ordinance is written for an established tree versus a heritage tree. Um, I agree with the city staff that I think that with proper maintenance, the hazardous, the potential hazardous nature of this tree could be mitigated. I also having palm trees, I know that they are very, very shallow roots, and I do not my experience would tell me that they are not the culprit in pulling up any of the driveway, that I think that it is um, as Director Servantes said, probably the oak tree that's there. Um, so I also, um, would, uh, deny the, this particular appeal. Um, but that being said, I guess, is there any other discussion to have, or does somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the appeal, uh, of tree removal permit uh, affecting one seven one six Lorraine Road with the sexagin, uh, palm tree, uh, for safety and health reasons, uh, stated by the applicant.
I'll second the motion.
And can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
No.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Chair Boyle?
No.
Motion carried.
Uh, thank you. Agenda item number seven. Can we have the staff report?
Thank you, Chair. This item is a request for, um, an extension of a prior approval that this committee um, granted back on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty. The original approval was for the application of conditional use permit twenty dash oh one. This was an application to allow an, an addition on a single-family home, which ultimately um, caused the property to exceed the maximum allowed lot coverage. Um, the property owner was unable to implement the approval in the last sixteen months. And the approval, the CUP approvals have since expired on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, um, just two months ago. The prop, the project architect has submitted a request letter attached to his staff report um, explaining the reason behind, um, the delay in implementing the project. And staff is recommending that the commission consider, um, extending the approval by one year, which effectively allow the homeowner to now implement the project and obtain building permit to construct the project. Um, so which will allow the CUP approval to be effective until June twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Is the applicant or applicant's representative here?
Yes. Hi. Hi, good evening, commissioners and city staff. Uh, my name is Chung Chan. I'm the owner representative. I'm the project designer for this project. Um, as, um, the city staff mentioned earlier, that the main reason, um, the CUP was not able to proceed was due to the homeowner has a business in overseas. And to, due to the pandemic, he was not able to travel, uh, back to United States at the time. So the only time that he was able to came, to come back is in July this year. Somehow that, um, the CUP has already been expired. So due to the pandemic reasons, and we would like to request for the extension for the CUP and allow the owner to proceed on the project as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? And are there any, uh, public comments for about or against this? All right, um. Do we need to have a discussion, or?
I have, no.
I have no, okay. Um, is there a motion?
I'll move to, um, extend the request for conditional use permit number CUP twenty dash zero one to June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty two.
I'll second it.
And can we have a roll call then?
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Uh, are, is there anything else?
Oh, this is perfect.
Huh?
All is good.
Okay. So I guess with that. God, I don't know what to say. Oh, meaning adjourned, I guess.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chair. Thank you all.
Thank you.